That address safety and we are not going to change anything right now. We're still going to be requiring masks, you still have to make sure that you social distance, that we do all of these things. We're reconsidering increasing the amount of students in the classroom to increase the numbers, but we also created five different outdoor learning classrooms. So that was part of how we utilize some of the funding is that we knew that our classrooms were so small, we had to have places for them. So why not outside? So we used it as a tool as well. We have our trades people actually construct those facilities for us so that we can utilize them in the non-pandemic environment as well. We are continuing to grow our programs. We just recently were approved from the Higher Learning Commission, who is our accrediting board, five additional fully online programs for our public. So what we can, what we have are, excuse me, we have our accounting program is fully online. We have our public administration that's fully online. The Bachelor of Business Administration is fully online, General Studies is fully online, and Mathematics is fully online. We have one master's program that is fully online. That's a master's in information, management information systems. We're hoping the Navajo Nation will capitalize on that for all of the people who are in the different programs of the Navajo Nation, that their supervisors see the value in sending their workforce back to school to get a master's in integration systems. We're moving towards that technological world. We're in it, but we're still behind the game a little bit, but there's a program here that they can send their students or their rooms to and it's fully online. So that's a really good opportunity for the Navajo Nation. We have 20 certificate programs, two technical certification programs, one of them's a new one at the response of the Navajo Nations purchase of all of that heavy equipment. We introduced a heavy equipment operator certification program. So we have that and we have the CBL and they're combined into a year-long program so that when the workforce goes out there, they wouldn't have the two certificates to manage equipment and also to drive trucks. We have 21 Associate of Arts Programs, Associate Science Programs, 15 Baccalaureate Degrees, and two Master's Programs. And one exciting thing that we need to report to this committee is that we are wanting to be the first tribal college university to have a PhD program and our application is being submitted to HLC. So once we have that, we will have a PhD in the language, culture, and leadership. So that is really exciting for us. And so we want to make sure that we push that and we have your support as an education community or as a HESI community. But if you'll read through this, this report, it highlights a lot of the activities that have happened and it's our strategic plan all the way to 2025. And it wasn't shaped just by us alone. We have listening sessions out in the community where we went and we took the time to hear from the community, what do you want into you to provide to you? And so that's what shaped that document. And the last thing that I want to share with you is that the state of New Mexico has offered the New Mexico Opportunity Scholarship, so Dena College on the New Mexico side, and Navajo Technical University will be able to capitalize on those dollars for our employee, I mean, our workforce that has been downsized. We look at the Four Corners area and all the coal miners that are no longer with those jobs, people in the fossil fuel industry, they can come back to school and the New Mexico Opportunity Scholarship awards them that ability to do that because they can enroll in less than half-time. So that is really a good start for us. There are, right now, as of this fall, we have 669 students of the 1913 that were enrolled in the fall. We only brought back 34% of them. So the pandemic has really hurt us, but these opportunities like this, these benefits and scholarships will help us build that capacity again. And we're really looking forward to addressing that through the scholarships that are promoted by the different states. We haven't heard much from Arizona, but we have a large percentage of our students at Chitlin, and we want to fully use that facility. It's a beautiful facility and we want to fill it with students, all the different kinds of students there in all of the programs that we offer. And so, you know, I just wanted to share that. NTU is trying to navigate this system and I think we've done a very good job at it. And we're still moving forward. Our people are not just working in a classroom. We're taking the classroom out into the field and we're letting our students know, this is what theory says. Now, fine, let's show you how this works. When they get jobs, they will really know how to use their education. We're not just saying learn all about theory. It's application of theory that is really critical for our students. Our faculty are committed to that vision. And we will still try our very best to make sure that we provide educational opportunities for the Navajo people. Appreciate you taking some time to listen to our brief update. And I know there's a lot more that we could say, but I'll talk about NTU till the cows come home because we really are doing some phenomenal things on our campus. We are building, expanding. We're going to get a new dormitory. It'll be the biggest building in Crown Point. We are looking and advocating for the Center for the Environment in Chitlin and Water Institute to become the Water Institute for the Navajo Nation here in Crown Point. We're ready to run with this. And we are also focusing on early childhood as far as the PK through third grade. And that initiative is supported by Office of Head Start, National Office. And that is something that is also a very growth, a big growing program with us. So we have a lot of exciting things here happening at NTU and those are just the few highlights that I wanted to make. So thank you, Mr. Chair and committee members. I stand for questions.
Thank you. Committee members, new question? I'm going to go, I should, um... Honorable Speaker, do you see the speaker's name up there? I don't see her name, but I wonder it might be. Is it the man who's there that I can see the name? These are asking the, uh... We're on a got a tip from the constituents that dialed in but can't get. Maybe that was five years ago. Plus a five year code, nine two eight, last four, four, four zero. Nine four, nine nine, four nine nine one.
The last... The last two digits are...
The last three digits are nine nine one.
Yeah, that's your...
Let's see.
Your...
Hang up and dial back in. Let's see what we get that results in. Okay, committee members. Honorable Slater, sorry for interrupting.
Gosh, Mella, thank you very much for your presentation. And I, where is it? Okay, page six, NTU Cycling Team. I've been following the team, I think it's AJ, the coach. And I just want to commend the school for going after the grant, getting started the program up. And it seems like there's good support from the school and pushing this forward. I just want to express my appreciation for thinking that that is a good use of the school's time and all of that because we're trying, there's a lot of us in Navajo trying to support outdoor recreation and showing that it could actually maybe help you in college or get to college is something that I don't think a lot of kids realize because they look at more traditional sports. But, you know, whether it's NTU or Orbitalist or Boulder, it's pretty intense biking programs. And I appreciate the fact that we're at higher elevation gets you a nice competitive advantage to those people. So if there's any way that I can be supportive of that, I'm happy to. I've got legislation 7522 that's supposed to support outdoor recreation. And it could be something that if it passes, the school could look at for applying for grant funding and the form of supporting trails or a program and maybe with the schools and things like that. So I want to commend you for that. And I love driving by the building in Chitlin, but I see it here, it looks like you're trying to focus on getting a fully staffed and operational. And I say, it looks a little lonely sometimes. So I look forward to when it is filled with more people. I see on page seven, you guys got the Equal Pathways Grants from the Alfred P. Sloan Foundation. And I know they're a very esteemed organization, so I think you deserve congratulations for that. Right? And this is, this is a major step in generating transformative ideas that remove obstacles for minority student pathways to graduate school, particularly the STEM areas with a special focus on Native American students. So I was just curious, maybe you could explain a little bit more about the initiative is there? And I think the last thing I want to mention is, at some point in the future, I would like to visit, is it your Center for additive manufacturing or that, that's the two? I really, I wanted to get a hands-on view, what are you doing? I just think there's a lot of applications for the whole mission for it. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else, committee members? It's... Like the... Reaching into... The Human Resource Network of the Nation. Committee is really aware of the need for accountants. We hear programs that there's only one accountant for folks managing hundreds of units of products. Or certain division, or certain program, very staffed. They also need that, they should be from the chapters. Making examples. And I think the more work to get out, but the courses are online. Those courses, we appreciate that outreach. This is a committee member, so Chair of the Nation, except for the... Motion, motion by anybody's, not a winner. Well, second, that anybody followed the game. Honorable Speaker, if you say you want... Yeah, I, I missed part of the... Certificate, you say you're sending the, the students, you have a certificate, you graduate? At the same time that you have a CDM?
The CBL is, Mr. Chair, committee members, the CBL is part of that program. They go through the nine weeks and CBL and they get it, but they make sure that they are covered when they get out into the workforce.
And so this is just for labor. Thank you. It'll be a step above labor because they need to move into... So, that has, at a minimum, twelve weeks, and that's eighteen. So the other person that had it on training, we're training with the heavy equipment operators, what kind of cans do they have with that? Is it trained for the consumption tank for the oil tank here and services up there?
Mr. Chair, committee members, I'm not sure the specifics on what will be entailed as far as maintenance, preventative maintenance, but I'm sure that that's part of it. When you become a heavy equipment operator, you need to know where the oil is changed and checked. And so that's part of it. Are there any band belts? All of those are encompassed in the training of the operation of that equipment. And the university spent their, their allocation of funding that they received to purchase heavy equipment, brand new heavy pieces of heavy equipment for our students and train them. So that is needed. We have the equipment here in Crown Point and Chitlin. So we wanted to make sure that we were equitable and sharing resources.
Honorable Speaker, follow me? Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to word that. I, I know there's, there is a big need for the equipment operators that you talked about because now the equipment that's being purchased all across the Navajo Nation. And this is ECD. They're going to be in the ground. They're supposed to be working on the training sessions and so on. For the equipment operators, they're bringing the money, maybe the personnel office with ECD. They're supposed to be setting up some sort of a training, training course of some sort. Make sure that everybody has a CBL, has a training of some sort through a new chapter. Right now, we don't have anybody at chap, we don't have to have a video operator who's on the cover. Yeah, the, the... The operator, the heavy equipment, you get a certificate. And it's basically having to do the walk-around, the safety checks, the checking of the fluids, those aspects. When I worked at Navy, I was so bad to be appropriate. It's really, you can be trained to that then. There was a short course, basically. And if there was anything wrong, then it's, it's come back with the mechanic. Yes. Okay, thank you. All right. I think there's no other questions than committee members. Just move, go, call, go.
Thank you, sir. Paul, we need you. I apologize to you with green, after Alana. Green, Alana's green, Alakalas State, green, Alakalas State with green, Allo, Chitlin. So, Allo, Chitlin, so, I always do become, I always do, we go to Marine, Chiria, I work for Navy, so close.
Thank you, committee members, that we have the chair, we're, we're, the chair, not so... So now we go to item. So, so, David.
Honorable Chair, I, and committee members, I just want to make sure that you know that we can schedule a tour for you to go to additive manufacturing and bad lab. Just let us know when you want to go so you can see all of that. And I'd like to have in response to Council Delegates Slater's question about the Alfred P. Sloan Award, to have you have a face-to-face conversation with Dr. Boy, scholarship branch, which I'll be, who is leading that project. So I would be able to do that. You just need to let me know when and we will be...
NTU commencement.
Oh, yes. That is May 13th. In the morning, at 10:00, we're doing the associates and certificates. And in the afternoon, at 1:00, I believe, we're doing the backsort and nasty. It'll be shorter in the afternoon if there's only one that's on master's.
It's Friday.
It's Friday.
Special session doing that, which I'm not signing on to, so.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
And if you are going to come to the graduation commencement, please let us know so we can have your name reserved on a chair. We know, we know who's expecting you.
What time, 1:00?
At 10:00.
Okay, thank you. Doctor, Roman, oh, yeah. Now we're doing the item, I think, presentation, St. Michael's Association for Special Education. Detective Cindy.
Yeah. Good morning again, Honorable Chair. So, Vice Chair, statement, committee members. Again, my name is Jeff, Director Smaes, I've been director since November last year, so I have enough to... And with the White, that is a little briefing on who we are. Smaes has been in operations since 1968. So, disabilities. Then I first started to serve the kids, then the expanding to adults population. So our three core services that we provide is education, day of education, and residential. Those are three programs. They were governed by three board members, Board President Annabeth Mas, Vice Chair, Vice, Vice Chair Margaret Sandoval, and a member, Jen's Dane. We also had a board member who resigned just a month ago. Wayne Kopp, he's in, so... And so those were our board members, but will be advertising for new board membership with our school. And so, so last year, about, I think, I, some of you might have met Janus Connors. He's been with the school for 44 years. He was specialist education director for many years. And he retired after 44 years last, in last school year. So ever since last year, Smaes had advertised and approved a special... And under Jim Connors' direction, he also had some volunteers that got on Smaes education and listened for. So they did some volunteer work and eventually became teachers. He was certified, so they were teachers. And since Jim retired, he became those two then. And at the same time, pandemic, it was hard for them to do teaching. So Smaes, for the past couple of years, they did virtual, virtual education by phone, distant learning, sending to home, sending, yeah, homeworks home. And under our education, we have 19 students, not, I'm sorry, 14 students. We, these students are from seven school districts. And they're from these school districts, they're only that school district. And then it's like a subcontract with Smaes. So they referred him to Smaes to provide education for these 14 students. But for the past couple of years, they've been just doing a lot of distant learning, but a couple of them has come back to the agency. And, and some of them has graduated, so that that's going to go down to number of students. But, so Smaes has been unsuccessful recruiting the certified special students. So we, I feel like it's been a real challenge for the past couple of years, especially competing with local schools. They always have advertised for, for special education teachers. And, and then I think sometime we're, we're not a large program, so we don't pay high dollars to special education teachers. But we try best to give them enough so we can attract them to Smaes. And we even tried to go to, we advertise newspapers almost a weekly basis, daily basis. And then we also even looked at other programs, that J1 program. We had some people committed to come, but I think they were kind of scared away by COVID. They said, I'm not ready yet, or I'll try again next year. And we, so J1 program, we tried that. We had a lot of, this school district that works with, as we see those programs, like Philippines, they have a lot of, they've been sending a lot of citizens this week for teaching. And we had some refunds, especially the teachers, but they're, they're not really committed. They said, we, we will wait until you guys believe that could be counted. So, so our agreement is with the school districts, they said, you must give us nine to 60 days for next school year before we can negotiate new contracts. And we had no teachers and we, we have to comply with the state of Arizona teacher education, make sure we have certified teachers. So that's, that was a real challenge. So finally, in March, the board, the board, we talked about with administration, we decided to temporarily close our special education for this upcoming school year, beginning August and next May, and for the summer school. So this year, we still have school in session. We will finish our regular school year this month on the twin year. And then we're going to do summer school beginning in June or early July. So from there on, you can close the education. So what's going to happen is, what are day services for adults, our residential, they will continue on. We contract the state of Arizona, DE, DE, and DEs, it's going to be applying for our day services. We have like 19 group home, we have 18 operations. So that, that in this program has to be, because it's actually... And then, and then for education, yeah, we, we already let the school districts know what our plans are for coming school year, and you're okay with it. So what's going to happen now is, we want to ensure there's slow transitions. Each of the, each of the individual will have, they call IDP, individual education plan, where we're going to lack the parents, the funding source, case managers, individuals themselves, the school teachers, then occupational installations, the UTPs, they'll come together and they'll, so what's going to do, they're going to have a transition meeting. So most likely, what's going to happen is all those individuals are currently at Smaes, they'll go back to the school districts. I know on the long-term base, some of these students have been with Smaes for many years since they enrolled as a beginner or person. So I know they will be affected by it because they have friends and they have teachers, they have staff, they have them. And some of them live in group homes. So I think we understand it, but we, I wish we continue on. And I think we tried our best to hire the special education teachers. Otherwise, we cannot do it. We do have paraprofessionals. So altogether, we have an education director. She's going to be leaving to join one of the up-school districts so that leave us with no, no education. She's the only one for now, but she was able to deal with paraprofessionals. So there's like, altogether, it doesn't be seven staff members. By the closure of the school. And, but we're going to continue to advertise. We did need some, some, some special educators recently. And I guess they already signed contracts for the school year and they're, they'll consider for next year. But we're going to, our goal is to make sure we try to... But the board has, that's a priority for the board as well as the school. So this where we stand now and... Yes, and one other, other challenge that we have is, some of these students, they're living group homes. Finding's direct care personnel has been very, very challenging. Although we try to pay them at least 14, $12.86 an hour to start with. It's still, I think it's just the nature of the work it may be. Because it's a special person to work, these, this, this, you provide personal care. Sometimes they, they didn't add you, they say things to you. But I think our staff, they've all been trained how to take care of the situation. So, but we've been, we'd like to continue to improve our direct care services, especially the residential. I think one of the amazing, the challenge is... I think one of the amazing, the challenges were open twenty-four seven. So a lot of them don't work, they like to work overnight. Some of them don't work, like to work on weekends. And then with the pandemic, some schools closes, some of the families that worked there had little children. They had to stay home and take care of their kids. So that's a great, real chance for us, and it's costing us a lot of overtime. So I think we have submitted some, or applications to ARPA. See if they have the stability, P D Es, as well as the money to, to, they could sell them. Revenue that we spent on the return, obviously, it's costing us a lot of time. So. Our board chair, that's my report, committee members, thank you. Welcome to the question. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Key. Start with a note, should I take a few? Those statements, except. When it goes second. And so you have a question coming?
Yeah, I do actually. So. In your analysis, do you think that? In the total number of potential clients. There are fewer that are in your program, that doesn't mean they're not being addressed, they're just being addressed directly within the public safety point of education system? And. Just can you speak to? Do you think? My thought is okay, Smaes has a, so we need place within that. I would be, I want to say make you whole, but you're operable in a way that's actually sustainable. Because the nation doesn't really provide direct funding for these sorts of things. For operations. It sounds like. The big concern staff. The rate of compensation. The alternative mutual work. And that is fact, maybe that parents or individuals are choosing to stay with other providers. I guess I want to. Try and stack back up again.
Thank you for the question. We do have some of those students, students I'm talking about, this can be recognized. The closure, some of, four of them are close to, they're between eighteen and twenty-two years of age. So under special education by law, they can receive education up to twenty-two years of age. So three of them will be graduated from high school. So once they graduate from high school, they would still need services. So Smaes, under their day treatment program, they can continue to serve these individuals. So, but they, they will be funded by state of Arizona. So that, that's one way of doing it. And then we, we, we are hoping, because we also work with Pineville in New Mexico and Fort Bend, we have three students of the area. We are hoping to have, because two of them are in good points. Hasn't stayed a good home, they can enroll in Wind Rock High School. So they can kiss the bus on a daily basis. We, we thought about doing that and then, others point, another program, I think they do have buses, buses that run on a daily basis. And those are some options that we have for students. But I think some really be decided on during the ID team and interdisciplinary team. Where all the families, the undersourced, teachers will come together. If they say, I want my child to stay at Smaes, then we might have to look. Maybe to Wind Rock School. But one of the thing I found out was, since those three divisions from New Mexico are. New Mexico resident. That they might not be, state of New Mexico might not be able to fund when they go to school during the jurisdiction issue. So, but we are trying to find ways for still be less, less of the kids will be impacted by this. But I have a question on, I, I see you're on the national stage, even they. Why, maybe it's because it's been done as soon. When they make friends, it's a hard year, those staff, why is it done? When there's a change of environment, we live with that. They, then they. They're named, yeah, I mean. It's made to create, we want to, you know, or like our, our families. To go over to. I know I. It's been there for a long time.
Yes.
I know they were that for. Uh, it's kind of a payment, so. I think we need to look at that. That's needs improvement, but we got to do legislation. That's not true, thank you. With that question? Yes, we, we, we can set up a meeting there for a committee. It will be. Joint session with the board, the unit of the board. And then also, we could, also, some of the schools that send the student school. I guess the, the other question is. Who, within the state of New Mexico. Who would be the funding agency with this? Not his power. These students, for, for when, for when gates school, it would be, I think they're under the. And then for Rama, it's under the social services, Rama. But I think, I think it's under B I U S, but I can double check on that. And part of the work in this, the more, in that meeting schedule, we have to get the appropriate approach from B I U. Cause under the, those other aspects of. Was it the behavioral and mental health services? Even though they're from Mexico, they're assigned to a facility in Arizona that money still follows them.
I mean, under I H S.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm just trying to try. Thank you. And, and as far as. Saint Michael's Association for Special Education. Or you, basically, as a tribal organization?
Yes.
And perhaps some of that foundational advocate committee could look at. To be able to research or. Any possibilities? If you could work with a legislative staff, a legislative advisor to gather some of those documents. Develop a folder from which we could. The committee could basically. Develop some strategies or alternatives to help. Because it is, it is. It's a very much needed sort of. It seems like throughout the years that the. That they go search for something or the entities that want to serve that population really. Especially if it used to exist that. We have to use special. A school for me. As I remember, so. Those are some aspects, I think we really. And, and the, the thing where I'm looking at is. Where. We have a population. Young people. Just like over the red time. The birth cohorts study shows you in, in your bodies and it could be affect. The whole self. We will have a population. We have to develop some strategies. Mr. Chair. I mean, yes, I, I also, I think our main funding source is state of Arizona. And then, of course, education was another one. And we also subcontract social services. But we just have four individuals. And then. We have very small grants, we now. But it's been a real challenge through this pandemic. Securing grants, it's been a real challenge. And then also, we did get some funds built under the house. In the, in the two. So we have the four funds that are sponsored by the house. And those would be through the skilled and some less. Yeah, yeah, of course, we're a town, it's mostly there. So we do have staff in person. And there it also came on donors to fund this. We get donors. And I, just by history, I guess there used to be, we had more people that were filming to the Smaes. But it's been very, it's been going up and down for the past couple of years. Sometime, we used to get donors, they, they pass on. We, we give them a mission. So I think a couple of times, there's a, so. So we depend. Sometimes we get these donations from people. So that, that helps us to, it's been, it's been very small. So it's unable to support our. You are basically, I can't recall all the specifics. You do have the nonprofits.
Yes.
So that you are able to accept the donation. Committee members. That's in that manner, say call for, for some amount to let it support for that fundraising. Aspect. Anybody else, committee members? Okay. So we have committee members, there's other comments or aspects. Committee, we just have to, I guess, find a, a time and a date to go to the facility. And meet with these other entities that we identified and even to have an update from the funding agencies. Institutions that send students to the services and their services. But the committee members, I'm not going to. Ask for that identification yet because we. I think we really, this month, we're taxed for. The schedule, the tax for myself and I think colleagues who are not seeing the big aspects. The committee members. But in, in the meantime, the gathering of information and documents, we will. Use that as a basis to schedule a. The other members. With those thoughts, committee members, Chris the Mose. Will call, accepting the report. Paul the Gay. Put on record. This policy now is that, for the members to the, the chair's attention and then from there, we. We've made the necessary contact.
Right, sir. Our Paul the Gay Junior.
Green.
Our Paul the Gay Junior votes green, our Pernell Holona. Our Pernell Holona votes green, our Carl Russell Slater. Our Carl Russell Slater votes green, our Charlene So. Our Charlene So. Our innocent J. Renika. Our innocent J. Renika votes green, chair would afford a favor zero pose.
Thank you, committee members. That takes us to number six, old business, that's the amount. And number seven, new business, that's the amount. We're going to item eight. Go to item eight, close-up meeting, announcement. Announcements of committee members. We have. The college commencement. May sixth. We have into commencement, May thirteen. We have. Commitment to attend the Cuban Independent School District commencement, Cuban Mexico. We have so, which feel. No severe school district commencement, that two severe. School district, high school, rich field, high school commencement. Twenty-six. The one sitting is twenty-six. Ones in the mornings and ones in the after. So we graduate at twelve and twelve. Which do we graduate at five?
That's Thursday.
Yes. When you say Cuba was?
Well, that's fourteen. I'd ask the committee to lead the. So what are the committee members? Let's see here.
I was, comment by someone, there's a crowd of the Santa Fe Indian School. They said that. In like the middle of the year, towards the end of the second quarter or something. I believe it's like take their kids out. Or something like that. Say we have, okay, so I never get that from the leadership. And so, I guess, I don't know if you could just put a reminder that maybe come October or something, you could think about. I don't know, head over there and give our kids a touch up.
I've attended Santa Fe Indian School. And that was before I was a delegate. And I got, had a chance to speak with them right before commencement. And so, attended commencement with us too. We do have quite a contingent.
Yeah.
Of, of Alabama students and, and the thing about it is. One of the Alabama students that was available was. Just for her. Yeah, for once. Yeah, for once, and then some of the other Malibu students, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. For four years. And so, there is that emphasis on the students to. And they become fresh and they start learning, they start being taught on how to apply for scholarships and where to apply. So, and that's something that. At schools, we need to involve them. It was. And it goes back to. Santa Fe Indian School has. Has an own, a leadership institute that's directed by leaders papers. It's, it's a, like, quite some organization. I'm gonna go over one, just to touch upon yours, the question you'd like. Ten year graduation. What field? They're back, they requested a flag. So I got them the flag. They haven't had a chance to go back over there. But I was waiting because then it showed up, they were just, everything was stopped. So I still have the flag. And it's waiting for a chance to get the flag there and present it to the council. And then also they requested a seal. Conference. And the conferences of every tribal organization sealed. Seal for tribes, present seal. All across the conference. The students were asking us for one. I've been trying to find one. I can't find one. You'll have to. Track them. I have none one.
The designs are, they're like a thirty percenter. I just say the thirty percenter.
Yes, yes. Let's, let's, could we put in a request? One for Cuba, one for Richfield, and one for Santa Fe. Get the seal. That would be great. Some of them are ceramic, the early ones were ceramic, yeah. What's, what's. Is it examination property and supply that has the flags?
Yeah.
That might be the place. I have the flag, but they don't have the seal.
Okay.
And let's, let's. Let's, let's see.
They has a. We can get that.
That would be great. What's, what's that?
Machine that's that we can put sides.
Yeah.
Probably that.
Oh, yeah, yes. The three D. The three D.
Here we go.
Yeah.
That would get out.
We just need a clean copy of the seals.
Okay, great, so we have new ideas, thank you. Committee members. And we'll just have to, I'll call around. To get the Santa Fe Indian School. Commencement, the seal. Yeah, we'll present it like that. And then a Cuba, we can put another. It'll be sitting there. Of course she learned, so that, that's basic to our announcements. Any others? If not, chairs open for a motion. We're going to a jury, second. Motion to run by. Second. No debate. Mr. Mose.
Yes, sir. Our Paul the Gay Junior. Our Paul the Gay Junior votes green, our Pernell Holona. Our Pernell Holona votes green, our Carl Russell Slater. Our Carl Russell Slater votes green, our Charlene So. Our Charlene So. Our Esse Dea Nica. Our Esse Dea Nica votes green, Chair would afford a favor zero pose adjourned at eleven forty-six AM.
Thank you, committee members. Thank you, Mr. King. And so, thank you, the chairman. We appreciate the hospitality, we appreciate the. Kind of report. And then our aspect is, we laid out some path to. To help technicals association. Put in some. Big ass of medical technical units.
We'll do our best. Did you all need standing for your lunch, or are you going to go over to the cafeteria? You're invited to the cafeteria, and you all have to sign for it.
He's headed this way, I haven't headed this way.
You all are gonna miss fabulous commute.
I mean, I was.
Okay.
On behalf of the community.
Yes.
I just have to leave my daughters.
For me.
I will get you in line.
In the community. I missed one, so I gotta go away for the second.
From what?
One was stable now, one was ninety-four, the other one's ninety-two. Two young men.
So who's all going to the cafeteria? I don't care before. So I can get you two into the line first, and you should get in and out. Follow me, you leave it here and you can come back.
Okay.
Drive my way back to the.
No, I got tapped.
Oh, is that Wednesday? Yes, they were advertising you lunch, courtesy of Council Delegate Honorable Paul the Gay. I was like, is he gonna be having a living burger?
I made, they asked me to make a request for them and I did, and they made a big old deal out of it.
Well, I'm very. Oh, I think it's very nice that they're.
And you can leave your things here and come back for it, right?
I am, I'm gonna be participating on Friday, so.
Well, I should be there Friday. I'll be a reason. I'll see you later. I'll be back on Tuesday. You're off. Brother, you decided. Thank you, yes. Good to see you. Wait, fall down somewhere. Yes and no, he's working on a project. Yes, veteran only. Group home, yeah. Veteran group home, yeah. And the veterans.
Yes.
Yeah. He's been at it.
Hello. So back to the day.
It's a, no, the work continues.
Oh, so you can come back?
No. Maybe staff is.
Okay, all right, okay. We talk to you? Okay, all right. Hello.
We're done.
Okay. Everybody to be back, should I?
Um, no, I think they're gonna eat, but I think the slider will just be back.
Okay, okay.